Seventeen, it's 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us? Thank you for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Kathleen.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
McCambell.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Well done. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussions of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual. Finances miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have five resolutions. The first is a resolution approving installation of a four-way stop sign, I'm sorry, of four-way stop signs at the intersection of Jefferson Street and Seventh. The second is a resolution to establish a new fee schedule for park shelter reservations. The third is a resolution to establish a new fee and charge schedule at Burlington Recplex. The fourth is a resolution amending fees for Dankworth Park Pool. The fifth is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for Amendment Number Four to the Administrative Consent Order Number, I'm sorry, Item Number Nine to eliminate combined sewer overflow, CSOS, in the Cascade Sewer Basin. We also have a public hearing set for February 21st. The first is a consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1722 Dodge Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. You've already seen that property. It's going to make somebody a lovely home. The second is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 2500 Summer Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. The third is consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Ganon Street right-of-way located south of Iowa Street and a portion of Whittaker Street right-of-way located west of Osborne Street. The fourth is a consideration of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use as a potable water source. The fifth is a consideration of voluntary severance of territory. Are there any, is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Is he none? Counsel?
No, thanks.
Get a motion then.
Motion to approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. Well done. This is time set for hearing for consideration of an intent to enter into a loan agreement in principal amount not to exceed $7,300,000 and authorize and approving a bond purchase agreement for general obligation refunding bond series 2017A publication has been made in the hot case prescribed.
This is going to be a follow-up on the discussions that we've had in both, both this and the next item that we've had previously in terms of borrowing. This is a refinancing. Travis Squires from Piper Jaffrey is here to kind of go over the details of where, where this fits within our schedule and what the potential savings are on the refinancing.
Mr. Squires, please do come.
Couple attachments. We have a big packet of information, but it's really not all that much, so. We're going to spend just a little bit of time walking through what you have for refinancing opportunity. That's going to be in the first part. The, the rest of the, I guess I'd say documents are more a follow-up to our conversation last October where we started talking about the CIP plan and the ability to utilize TIF revenues and perhaps releasing some of the increment back to the general fund as well as potentially lowering the debt service levy over the next 10 years as you kind of back off your current CIP plan from, from what's been done. To kind of hit the, the first part of the packet, you do have two things. One is just a single piece, but in the, in the packet of information, as you cycle through a few pages, there's some information regarding the financing. You get to a page that says savings analysis. There's a, there's a chart in the, in the middle of the page. That chart represents really what is being proposed with the refinancing. So that first hearing item that, that you'll have, and my intention is kind of go over both pieces and then allow you to take the, the action steps. But this first component here compares your existing bond payments versus your new bond payments. You see a semi-annual savings number. If you slide over to column six, you see annual savings. Over the course of the next six years of budget, which is fiscal '18 out to '23, there's approximately $234,000 of savings due to the refinancing. So all that's been factored into your CIP plan already. It does represent about a 30% decrease in your overall interest cost from your current schedule. So this is a savings that's net of all the financing costs involved. So this is actual real savings to the taxpayers of the city. So 234,000 is the mark that's under there. By means of just comparison, you know, rates, rates looked really good. There were some other bond sales kind of in the area today. Lenmar Schools had a, a bond sale. Your rates were very comparable from, from what they received. One thing I would, do want to back up, you know, the city did go through the rating process again with standard and pores. Your A-plus rating was affirmed. Some other pieces of good news is the city's worked through your kind of financial projections and, and move forward and kind of fulfilling your five-year plan on policies. You know, the rating agency has given some indication that, you know, you may even have some upward mobility if you're able to kind of reach your policy goals over, within this fiscal year is the current projection. So it likely will take a little bit for, to see any rating movement because then you got to get the audit, they got to review the audit, and then they may want to see one year of kind of maintaining to make sure there wasn't any, you know, one-time transfers that made things look better than they actually were, so.
Do you, do you know, can you give us some examples of the catalyst behind, behind the, the upward movement and the possible future upward movement?
Yeah, so, so the upward movement really, if you go back to the city's credit position five, five-plus years ago, you were sitting on very narrow cash reserves, very limited financial flexibility was probably the, the bigger piece that you were getting, I'd say, hammered on, that if, if something happened, you didn't have any ability to even cover with reserves. City also had some underperforming funds within the overall operating budget, which was also then kind of a drag on the city's credit criteria. If, you know, the push came to shove and you needed to pay your bills, what were you going to do? As you've adopted formal financial policies that kind of provided the, the rudder for moving forward and given some framework as Jim puts through the budgets that then come to the council to, to work through the final details, the ins and outs, they've seen a lot of progress over the last five years and it even really kind of been ahead of schedule. You know, despite some revenue things coming under, you guys did have some positive news with the budget last year and kind of where you ended up. So the catalyst has been that you have gotten, you've followed through on, on what you've been telling the rating agency that you're going to do. The potential future is just really getting to a place of financial stability from their standpoint, while you may view, you know, where your policies are and where you're sitting is really solid ground and solid footing for an, an A-level credit. To kind of hit to that next double A level, there's just a little bit higher benchmark. So you're comparing yourselves against other cities around the country that, that operate at a high level. So that's obviously a, a good place to be. From the city's standpoint, why should you care? Well, it does, you know, it's, it's more than just bragging rights, you know, that, well, we got this for a bond rating, you know? It's really a, a place where a city your size should be, in my, my opinion, at that low double A level is, is probably the, the long-term picture. You do have some limitations just from your socioeconomic profile that doesn't compare as well to, you know, a metro suburb outside of, you know, certain communities, but from the standpoint of your operating, your financial management strength, you guys are really sitting well. So the things you can control, you're, you're excelling at. So those are things that they've been really complimentary of. The only tick, probably one of the things keeping you below is just you're not quite there to the meeting your policy objectives. So once you kind of meet those, you know, that'll give them another kind of fresh set of facts to consider for upgrades.
We'll be there shortly, yeah, right?
Yeah. That's the plan. So, so great, great question. In terms of the, the savings analysis, that there's a few other, you know, supporting pages, your proposed new bond schedule. If you remember, this was the original 2011 bonds, the ones that I always go back that kind of give me, you know, that made you scratch your head probably. This is the original backloaded issue, but now all that's left is kind of leveled debt. But, you know, this is a, a nice piece of savings for the, the city to move forward on. Meets your policy objective. You know, as in terms of average interest rate, you're, you're going from an average rate of about 3% and you're taking that average rate to about 1.75%. So it's a, it's a nice opportunity. Obviously, you'd love to see huge numbers and big numbers, refinancing $7 million of debt, but the, the truth is that these bonds were issued when rates really weren't all that high. You've just reached the call date on those bonds now, so you have the opportunity to prepay or refinance. So the other thing that I, I'll kind of, if there's any questions on the refinancing, I'll take them, otherwise I'm going to kind of switch to talking about what's the second piece, which will be your, your second hearing for kind of your new money borrowing. That is hit on this second sheet of paper here.
Before we.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before I forget it, I want to thank you for your help too, for what we've been doing here. So I appreciate it. Thank you Travis.
You're welcome Jim. The second sheet of paper is double-sided. The, the one sheet has the project listing for the 2017 financing. So there's a couple of things that have been identified for your, your borrowing. It'll be a $10 million borrowing set for a month from now. With that borrowing, you will take care of the, the financing for the police department project. So a lot of that funding for that project is coming from city funds that, that are on hand already, but 2.2 million of that financing will come from the next borrowing. There's a few street projects that are slated to be paid from TIF. They're typically Ri, the Rise Grant, local matches for Division and Agency Street, and then you have another Agency Street improvement east of Highway 61. So that totals approximately 2.2, 2.5 or 2.6 million that will be paid from tax increment financing. So right now, 2.2 million paid from the debt service levy over the, a 19-year period of time. The tax increment financing will be paid out through 2028, so approximately a 10-year financing, works out to 11-year financing. And then the remainder of that project will kick-start kind of Phase One on your flood mitigation improvements. So that will be paid with the, the sales tax, tax increment dollars, essentially kind of the, the state money that's granted back to you. So it was originally that, that 5% sales tax that's paid, you know, the, the increment, the growth that Burlington has achieved there, the state is allowing you to intercept that growth instead of going to the state coffers. You're able to intercept that growth and use that for your flood improvement projects. So that's a, that was a state competitive grant program that you guys were awarded $26.2 million over the course through 2033. So this is the first phase of that. We're limiting this first, this borrowing to $10 million so that you guys can keep your debt as, as bank qualified, which carries probably a quarter percent interest rate deduction. So that's one of the reasons you're limited. Certainly Phase One right now is projected to be a little bit higher than that, the amount, but you'll have about $5.1 million plus, I think it's going to be about $700,000 on hand at the end of this fiscal year to kind of start that Phase One project. So that's, that's what's being forecasted. The other, the backside of this sheet just has a breakdown of what the, the estimated debt service schedule looks like. The interest rates I'm showing here are about a quarter percent higher than today's rates, but you'll be locking these rates in approximately four weeks from now. So the, the rest of this packet, I don't intend to, to really go through a lot of it. I, I do just want to give you a couple of highlights. You know, as we're working through this budget, I do want to kind of hit one thing that, that we talked about last fall, and that was the decision of the city to release some of the tax increment financing valuation back to the original taxing entities. So in this case, back to the school districts, the county, as well as your general fund and the community college, about $10.3 million of valuation. So that, you actually, where you could have taken about an 11.1% increase in your tax increment financing valuations, you actually took a 3.3% decrease in that valuation as a city. The, the good news on that side is it allowed you to buffer what was otherwise kind of a, I call it kind of a tepid growth. You got 2.5% total valuation growth as a city by, by reducing your tax increment financing valuation. Instead of your general fund valuation going up 1.7%, it went up about 3.3%. So it gives you a little bit of budget flexibility, although there's probably never enough. You know, there, there's always, there's always costing, you know, that, that's kind of keeping up with the Joneses, so to speak, to, to get that, that normal increase, but that's certainly an increase that you guys haven't had, and you averaged about 1.1. So it gives you a little bit of flexibility going into this year by, by releasing some of that tax increment financing valuation. Other than that, I guess the thing that the rest of these pages, if you were to compare them to the presentation back from October, was just kind of proven out how you're, you're paying for your debt. The, the good news is we kind of worked through this in the kind of a preliminary CIP that we've talked about with Jim. Obviously, none of this council approved as far as kind of a long-term 10-year CIP, but as we're looking at the list of projects, it's a lower load than what you currently have on the books, which likely means you could be looking at potentially reductions in the property tax levy as soon as maybe five years from now, dropping that debt service levy from the current $3.80 down to $3.40, and the potential of even taking it down another 40 cents five years out. So that's kind of what's currently been built into the CIP planning model that we're working on with the city. So we'll just kind of keep updating that. I intend to go over this in more detail at the next meeting, but this is some food for thought at least. I don't want to bore you with 20 pages of documents, but I had the file updated, so I'm like, well, I'll print it to you. It'll give you some, if you, if it generates some questions and you want to go over that, that's fine. The only other piece I want to hit, because this is quote-unquote kind of a policy violation, so to speak, of the city, you know, with this current issuance and the timing of your flood mitigation improvements, you're going to clip the 70% debt limit. You'll be at 73% debt limit on April 13th. By the time you hit July 1 and June 1, you'll be back down below that at 66%. So it's just kind of a timing thing based on when your debt is being issued, but yeah, you're, you're still living within that debt limit margin, which is another, was another goal. You were, back in the 2011/12s, you were closer to 80%. So you've taken down your debt load over the last five years as well as got your financial house in order, so to speak. So otherwise, that's all I really have. I know there's a lot more pages than that, but I don't mean to take a lot of your time tonight, so if you have questions, I'm certainly happy to answer those at this time.
Questions? Travis?
Thank you Travis.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody from the audience who has any questions or concerns?
What's the duration of the bond? The current bond?
Wait, we need some.
Can you come to the, yeah, can you come to the?
Come to the microphone.
Yeah, my name is Steve Rowland. I'm here in Burlington. And I just was curious what the duration of the bond is.
Name and address, sorry about that.
Oh, address also. Steve Rowland, 2838 South Main Street here in Burlington.
Thank you.
The, the duration of bond is approximately three years. So the, the total payoff is six years, but it's equal annual payment, so it puts the duration about three years.
All right. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Counsel? I'm good.
Anytime we save money, good.
Okay, and I get a motion?
I'm sorry. Motion to close, Robert.
Second.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
I have a resolution expressing intent to enter into a loan agreement and authorization and approval of a bond purchase agreement for general obligation refunding bonds series 2017A.
Second. Thank you. Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. This is time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending section 170.
We need to have the hearing. Please open the hearing.
I'm on the wrong paper, huh? Yeah, I know, I thought I had the paper over here. This is consideration of a general obligation loan agreement in principal amount not to exceed $7.8 million for general obligation corporate purpose bonds series 27, 2017B.
So we hit a lot of the information already. The, the main thing I wanted to point out is you'll note the 7.8 million as the hearing amount. The anticipated borrowing is at 10 million. The 2.2 million that is from, for the police station is not required to be, for a hearing to be held since that was a voter-approved election or referendum. So that's why the number's lower.
Okay. Any questions from the audience?
Leon Chehan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I, I can't tell you enough on, on debt. I guess it's my Scotch-Irish heritage. I don't like debt, nothing. It's how I run my household. After over 175 years or whatever Burlington's been around, it should be the same way. When I moved here in 1983, your total debt was less than what you're paying in interest today. You're not going the right way. And in this particular issue on the riverfront, we talked about it last time I was here, you're trying to do flood protection on a river that on an east-west axis at Burlington has meandered 100 miles, as far east as Peoria, as far west as Rome, Iowa.
Maybe taper it though for, for, for this specific.
Yeah, I'm going to taper what I'm saying. I'm just saying, you're trying, you're going to go, the whole project, as I heard it, was around $66 million. You're going to have cost overruns, nice ballpark. What you're planning to do on a riverfront is $100 million, trying to control a river that's meandered 100 miles with a flood wall that's no taller than I am. That's lunacy.
66 million is, as he's talking about that, our original application was for, right at 32 million of, a little over 32 million of funding, which required a, a match, a dollar-for-dollar match. Our match on that project was from our sewer separation work. We were able to count sewer separation work already completed as well as other work that we are still required to do. So we're essentially, that, that, it's leveraging dollars, but the overall project was up at that, as Leon's mentioned, in the 66 million. That's including both the, the, the amount of the funds from the state and then our match to it. The project got reduced during the course of that to the 25.2 million, which would require a $25.2 million match, so it would be a little over $50 million project. But that's, that would be the frame of reference from where he's getting those figures.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience, questions?
Or 26.2.
Counsel?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Your honor, I move that we approve the resolution expressing intent to enter into a loan agreement for $7.8 million.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, moving forward. This is time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending section 170.75, and thank you again Travis. 170.75, signs of chapter 170 zoning code of the Burlington Municipal Code publication has been made in the hot case prescribed. Mr. Tippett?
This is an ordinance changing two sections of the sign regulations. On December 20th, the Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing and voted four to zero to recommend approval of these two amendments to the City Council. These amendments were, their, their recommendation for the change in these amendments were based on the request of the applicant and on the lack of guidance or inclusion in the current conference of plan related to signage. The two changes, one being under 170.75.104, allows for freestanding signs that are shared by two or more separate businesses located on the same property to be up to 60 feet in height, provided the sign is a monument sign and includes a landscaped area surrounding the sign. And the second is a common freestanding sign or pole signs that are shared by two or more separate businesses located on the same property shall be allowed to be increased up to 50% larger than the maximum area stated in the table, which increases this from 250 to 375 square feet per sign. These are both regulations for the commercial and industrial district along Roosevelt Avenue only. The commercial corridor has a separate sign regulations that allows additional signage recognizing the commercial corridor there. Staff did recommend a, the change to the size of the signs, the 50% larger. We've had some requests for that increase of signage for multi-tenants. Did not recommend, staff didn't recommend the increase in height just based on lack of inclusion in the conference of plan. There's no discussion on that. The previous conference of plan talked about shortening signs, although that's not still our conference plan. That's the only reference in our conference of plan was one, one plan ago, so, and then just lack of comments or concerns from other property owners other than the applicant. So the Planning Commission did recommend both changes, but just to give you a frame of reference on that.
Are there anybody that has any comments or concerns from the audience?
Larry Williams, 1567 Mason Lane. I served on those commissions once, one time. I don't see where there's a need to raise the height. Not concerned about square footage, but I don't think we want to see a six-story building there for a sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Tyler Sherwood, I represent Sherwood Company. We made the request on behalf of a couple of our customers. I guess the, the reason, and, and we actually requested more height, and this was kind of a compromise we came to. We've got all those trees along Roosevelt that pretty much restrict a lot of visibility of signage, and it's, you know, that's, that's high property taxes for, for not really being able to advertise your business adequately in, in a commercial zone.
Thank you Tyler.
Any other comments from the audience? See you then. Counsel?
No problem.
No problems.
Good.
Motion to close.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye. I have a motion for preliminary, preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending section 170.75, signs of chapter 170 zoning code of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
I have a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Deer Point Estates subdivision.
Second.
This is the property going through the process, went through the annexation process, now submitting a plat for, a preliminary plat for approval. Again, this is located south of Kessler Street between Summer Street and South 14th Street as shown in yellow here. The property is preliminary platted as 34 lots, though as we discussed it previously, it could be split into multiple phases through the final plating process. One of the comments or questions that came up was having access through the site or two accesses through the site, whether that's done all within the first phase or requiring a, a letter of credit or performance bond to ensure access out to Summer Street. So that was one of the questions there, but. So that was one of the questions there, but again, 34 lots extending South 14th Street down to the site from Kessler Street, and eventually whether it's the first phase or second, a connection out to Summer Street, so that this property would be served by two access points. This did go to the planning commission on January 17th, and was recommended for approval four to zero, with one abstaining to the city council. With that, the developer applicant is here as well.
Thanks, Eric. Good evening, guys. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
I'll try to breeze through this before, real fast, and I think you guys have kind of seen all of this before, but just to go over some of that again with you real.
Ryan, just for the audience's sake.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, my name's Ryan Nagraki, I'm here on behalf of Midwest Realty Group. Thanks. So here again to discuss the proposed subdivision Deer Point Estates. Let's see, we'll start here. The Deer Point Estates, the subdivision I'm looking at, as Eric mentioned, it's a 34 single-family lot subdivision, looking at doing on the south side of Burlington, this is Summer Street here on the west, Kessler Street on the north, and 14th Street would be extended here on the east part of the subdivision. We envision the price points of these homes to be between 180 and 275,000. Several things, there are going to be some covenants in place, just to make sure it's a pleasant neighborhood and a quality subdivision that gets developed. We will be selling these lots to local builders, so encouraging local employment growth, sales tax revenue from the materials that'll be purchased locally as well. It will open up additional land for future residential development, I'll go over some of that, maybe a little bit more here in a minute. Our goal is to break ground here this coming spring. Annexation of the property was, was approved here by the city council here, you guys, earlier last month. We did something a little bit different, maybe. What we did was we reached out to all the neighbors of the subdivision, we sent them a letter back in December, just kind of describing the project, why we're doing it. We sent a comment form with that, we received two comment forms back. The main concerns were the views out their backyard and water drainage. So we've engaged Klinger and Associates, I've got Steve Hartman here from Klinger for the engineering and development of that subdivision, just to ensure those water drainage and those types of things are addressed properly. Last, last spring, there was a housing assessment done by Gruen &amp; Gruen and Associates. They, they stated that development in Des Moines County has not facilitated the economic development of the county as a whole, then, then could be compromised. Currently, there's limited land in the city limits of Burlington for housing development. Something I found interesting, you know, being born and raised here in town, that a third of the housing stock here, 75 years or older, so. Quick overview of where the company Gruen &amp; Gruen found the most demand to be. Basically, they say those that cannot afford to purchase anything above 260,000 is gonna be the most demand. The price range there, again, I'm trying to hit that 180 to 275, so it'd be about in this range. So they're saying that the demand of 161 units out to 2025, with only a surplus currently on the market of about four units. So there's a pretty tight supply for the demand that they're forecasting. Just a quick breakdown on some overview of construction cost and things like that. Currently, based on the economics of, of the land development side, it does not encourage housing to be built under that 270 price point due to your development cost, some of your hard, hard and soft costs and your financing, your builder's overhead profit. It's encouraging right now, you know, development of homes in Burlington to be about that 265 on up. Currently, there are lots out there for sale in Burlington that are priced anywhere from that 35 to 55,000 on up, so typically your lot sales price should be about 10% to 15% of the price of a home that is built out. So, you know, if you're selling lots anywhere from those ranges, you're encouraging, you know, $300,000 above housing. Kind of just went over that. Currently, right now, my, my cost on a, on the first phase, which will be anywhere from 21 to 25 lots, is about 33,000, that's my cost on the infrastructure side. So as you can see, the cost of infrastructure does not allow for the, the lots to be developed and sold to hit that price point that the housing study encouraged. City, the city did a comprehensive plan several years ago that stated to evaluate new incentives to remain effective in promoting new housing development. The plan also stated to make sure the city remains competitive to other communities that surround Burlington, and to consider ordinances and programs to encourage the development of workforce housing. Also, this past summer, you guys held the goal planning session back in June, you guys supported that housing study that was completed. I believe Jim had noted that property valuation here in, in Burlington is growing at a very slow rate. Noted the infrastructure cost for new development is cost prohibitive for, for that, and to potentially provide incentives for roadway or utility extensions to open up new development. With this, I understand I'm here for the plat, request for the preliminary plat approval, I think, shared this with you, I will be back. Not the last time you get to see my pretty face, and this green tie, mayor, from last week.
I like that.
Yep. I will be back to visit with you folks about requesting to create an urban renewal area for a TIF rebate. To the subdivision, I will break it up into two, two different phases, as Eric mentioned earlier. Right now, it is my intent actually is to have two access points from the start, so off Summer Street and South 14th. Some of the things, you know, that come with those developer agreements in, in a TIF is that to ensure the 34 lots are ready to be built out, build out all the infrastructure. You know, a little bit different, this is a TIF rebate request, is that I still take on all that liability upfront, I take all the risk on myself upfront, and that get rebated through the property taxes over, it's a 10-year, but it takes 12 years to recapture that, based on that. Community support, I've, I've talked with a lot of different folks in Burlington. I have received several letters of support, one from Jason Hutchinson with the Greater Burlington Partnership. Talked with a lot of different realtors that are excited about this opportunity for Burlington. They, they see quite a bit of shortage in this price range. Local recruiter here for Great River Medical Center supports this project as well. He finds that recruiting new, younger doctors, doctors to town, that trying to have new housing in this price point's important. If you look on the market as of the end of January, if you went from 175 to 275, there was only one home on the market, single-family home, in that price point that was less than 10 years old. So not a lot of newer construction in town in those price points. And I visit with other builders in the area, too, that have a strong interest in purchasing several lots, because currently there are no lots available to builders to come in and put up spec homes, or do custom builds for, for people in town. Some benefits, you know, there's gonna be, to the city of Burlington, I will be extending South 14th Street to, to the proposed development area, there'll be new infrastructure and the street would be put on there. I have gained the right-of-way agreement with the land over, land owner adjacent to the east, that would be then given to the city, all the way down to the lift station. And then some of the other ones, you know, increased property assessments, increased utility fees to the city, permit fee income, creating housing where there's a need. This project will help with the economic development for Burlington, and helps with employer attraction and retention. With that, again, I, like I had mentioned, that I understand I'm here for the preliminary plat approval tonight, but just wanted to go over the whole project with you again, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the audience, Ryan? Anyone besides Lee? Come on, Lee.
Leon Shahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I, I guess, just to get to the point here, this is just what irritates me and why there's such a divisive movement in the whole country. When you do TIF, which is not exactly what we're talking about tonight, but that's coming down the road with this project, I'm paying that subdivision's taxes. And what that means, based on this conversation, is I'll be paying taxes for new doctors. Now I ask you, who makes more, a doctor or me? That just makes me so angry that I'm subsidizing housing for people to make multiples of what I ever made. That's just plain wrong.
Anybody else besides Leon Shahean? Is he okay?
Vanessa Watson, 1504 South Main Street. I was just a little concerned about the numbers you gave in January, since we know that most of selling and purchasing of homes is during summer months, and that's when I had the privilege of buying a home, and there were a lot of homes in that range during that time, so I just wanted you to speak to that a little bit more.
Thank you.
To answer your question for the, the housing demand, there's quite a few homes out there probably in that 180 to 275 price point. A lot of those homes are, as you saw, a third of the housing stock is about 75 years or older, so a lot of those homes that are currently out there, there's a lot of upkeep, maintenance that are to those. The, the tax assessments on those are probably going to be lower, that would create lower tax revenue to the city, things like that, I guess.
Any other questions for Ryan from the council?
No, thanks.
Kathleen?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. This time, if you have, will entertain comments from the audience. I'm not going to, not gonna use the time, but I'm gonna ask you to just be respectful. Anybody from the audience, comments? Mr. Shahean.
This isn't controversial.
What?
Yeah, I didn't stutter. This isn't controversial, got a bit of a problem near where I live. At the corner of Curran and Kirkwood Street, there's a very large oak tree that appears to be in the city of right-of-way, and there's about three or four whittlemakers hanging from it. It'd be nice if somebody dressed that before somebody got a limb through their windshield or on their head.
So, hold on just a second, Eric, do you have noted that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I want to clear up something. Are you, you have something else you're gonna break?
No, that's it.
I want to clear up something. I was not here in 1936.
You weren't? I was.
No, it's 37. Any other, any other comments from the audience? Anybody else?
You're not that old, Bob.
Yes, he is. You guys have been wonderful, you really have. We appreciate it through this whole entire process. Mr. Teslin, any closing remarks? Kathleen, are you good? Kathleen's mother turned 97, her name's Pearl Edkin, she's turned 97, she's a, she's a gem in the city of Burlington, and just Pearl, make sure you have her watches or something, recording. Happy birthday to you, what a blessing. Counsel lady?
I just have a couple things, kind of some events going on downtown, which I love to, you know, try to bring people down there, I just love our downtown. So Saturday, February 11, 2 to 5, downtown, mostly on Jefferson, is the, the Chocoholic Frolic, who doesn't love walking around getting chocolate. So 2 to 5, Saturday, $10 before, $12 day of, so you should all get down there and get some chocolate and walking in. And then on Sunday, February 12, at the Capitol Theater, from 3 to 5, is the Southeast Iowa Symphony Orchestra, their winter concert series. So that'll be really good, and get a chance to get out and check out the Capitol if you haven't ever been there, and they hold a lot of great events. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Councilman Scott?
Yeah, Mayor, earlier this evening, we had a discussion on the, on the budget and come to an agreement. One of the, one of the concerns that was expressed was the, my recommendation on the golf course irrigation pump. And I would like to modify that maybe, and suggest that we use the funding from the sell of the property at Roosevelt and agency, and use a portion of those funds to cover that expense. And that money was actually slated to be used for Mount Pleasant Street, or was going to be recommended to be used for the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge. Rather than fund, rather than bonding for the 120,000 for the pump, we'd take it from that payment and then add that $120,000 bonding to the, to the TIF financing bond that we would do for the bridge, Mount Pleasant Street Bridge.
I've got no problem with that. I like that better, actually.
The staff needs nods of heads or something to make that change.
You got a head nod?
Yes.
I'm not gonna ask you if you got a head nod, I already know you don't. Mayor Proton?
God bless the Hawkeye.
All right. Councilman?
Nothing at this time.
You're deserved the right.
Chief, did you have a comment you wanted to?
First and foremost, I just want to thank you for all the work you've been going through to get through this budget part, and this is a difficult thing for me to stand up here and talk about it, but it's an extremely important thing that I need to share with you. As we went through the process to buy the US Bank Building, I was tasked with selling this community on that project. And the one question I was asked, more than any other question, "Chief, what are you gonna do for parking?" I said, "Well, we got a lot, Catty Corner, that holds 18 stalls." And repeatedly, repeatedly talked about that. It was extremely important to this community that we had a place to park, and that we weren't tying up all the parking downtown. And so with the purchase of that bank, 1.2 million dollars, we had a parking lot that had 18 stalls. And with Max Project to be a good neighbor, which was very advisable, I think that was a great idea to let him continue with his project and trade that for what we did, it's a great idea, but now I don't have a parking lot. Critical incident happens in town. Here comes four DCI agents, two ATF agents, the crime scene processing team. Where do they park? What do we do? You know? I mean, and I so appreciate your proposal, and I know you are working diligently to add staff to the department, but I just feel it's extremely important that I talk about this. I mean, the chamber, the greater partnership, you know, it was one of the questions that, that he had me answer, is the bulletin when we handed it out to try to, to pass this project, you know, US Bank Parking Chief. You know, the whole time we were comparing this to Toms, and that was one of the biggest questions I was asked, why, why wouldn't you want Toms when you have all that parking and there's no parking downtown? But we do, we do have parking, and it's 18 stalls, and we bought that, we paid for that, as part of that 1.2 million dollars. With that in mind, we probably won't be in that new building till, let's say, at a, at a good date, maybe May or June of '18. So this is possibly something that could be budgeted in FY '19. But as one of the councilmen pointed out earlier, I mean, do we task that with a different council? Maybe everybody runs again, it's the same council, I don't know. I just feel it's very important that, that when I went out there to sell that project, I, I'm a man of my word, and it means a lot to me, my integrity, that that's how I helped sell that project. So I'm just, I'm just, that's just a comment, you know, I don't even need a response, I just ask that you keep that in mind, and, and thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
I, I was the one that brought that up, Chief, and I, I do have a comment, and I appreciate what you just said. One of the things that didn't make me too reluctant to offer that is the fact that when we made that proposal on the, on the bank building, we were not planning on expanding the parking on Jefferson Street, and we are in fact going to do that. I think the 21 stalls are going to be added, if I remember right.
I think it's 17 stalls, and it wasn't my understanding that those would be for the police department.
Well, and, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think they will be, but they were all, they, with, with. with, with adding those parking spaces, it's going to open up additional parking down there. And I will do what I can to get that back the following year if I'm here. And if I'm not, I'll be setting out that audience, making the same pitch, so. It's not, it's, it wasn't intended to be a permanent thing.
No, no, and I understand. Like I said, I know you're, you are diligently trying to do something for our department. This is difficult for me, but it's important to me that, that I answer back to the people when I promised them that we would, part of this project was parking. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Just, I think you probably all have gotten a copy from the chamber in regards to BNSF with their certified sites. But they have listed the, their Middletown site, what, one hundred and fifty-three acre site as a certified ready for development. That was the list, they had that along with four other projects at the time. So, I mean, it's just part of an ongoing inventory of things that are, are ready and available to be used as time moves on. The count, the state is already listed as a certified site for portions of that facility. It just makes it easier as we move forward to see that get developed, and that's all I had.
We're going to close out before we do, just want to say, in this, in this budget season, I was adding up all the emails that I received, and this is probably, if it's not the most, it's got to be a close second to probably the first year that I was on council, that I've received so many emails and phone calls and text messages with, with support or with adding some information or some thoughts in regards to this budget and to me. That encourages me. I, I, I like that people are getting more involved and letting their voice be heard and being a part of this process. And the fact that they reach out means that they feel like they are a part of this process, so that's a good thing. We want people to, to know that they are a part of this process, and when you do say something, it, it does get heard. Doesn't always mean that you're going to get what you want, because again, we've got twenty-five thousand plus people in this city, and that's pretty hard to satisfy everybody. But that being said, again, we appreciate everybody being a part of this process. It, it means a lot. So, that's all I've got. Can I get a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, guys. Thanks, lady.